...hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, if they wish to inspect any of the referenced items. We have a number of presentations this evening which we are going to do before the public session. But before we even get to that, for those of you who were not at the last board meeting, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce our new business administrator, Mrs. Rachel DeCarlo, if you'd like to. We welcome her. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. So we have two presentations tonight. I'm sorry to disappoint the audience, but our auditor will not be here tonight. You'll have to wait until October 30th for that presentation. I know that that's probably why you won't came out. But I think you should reason to come back. So our first speaker, I've had an association with for a number of years, a very happy association with, and I'm so glad that she's here working with our district this year, Ms. Eileen Dackenworth, who's going to be addressing character education. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Eileen.
Thank you. I don't know how this works. I hope it works because it's... Well, anyway, first of all, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you about the character education program. And it would be nice if I could say that I was bringing something that is totally new to the district. But actually, you've been doing character education from the moment you wrote the mission statement that you're trying to provide a... to nurture a supportive climate for individual diversity. And also in terms of second part of the mission statement, when you talk about technology and you try to use it for academic, social, and emotional growth. So actually, what I am doing is attempting to put together all the elements of character education, which may go by different names, so that Rockaway Township has all the programs on the same page. Oh, it does. I can't see this, though. Uh-uh. Who did that?
They did.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's great. Okay. So I was looking at it, and I said, "This is rather interesting." But anyway, we finished your... right there, your district mission statement to nurture a supportive culture. Now, a number of people have said to me, "What is character education?" And character education is ethical education. It's not religious education. It's not the religious right. It's really an alliance of many different programs. But what distinguishes character education and the approach is that it's all based on core values. What Rockaway Township stands for. Now, why? The trends from the National Schools of Character... And by the way, I'm a National School of Character evaluator, trainer, and I have the great privilege of going inside schools to see what works. And in the last three years, eighty-five percent of those schools saw a rise in standardized reading scores, eighty-six in math scores, ninety-two percent a decrease in suspension rates, ninety percent a decline in discipline referrals, and ninety-one percent a decrease in bullying. And these are actual facts based on the National Schools of Character and the data that they have submitted. Now, New Jersey has four national districts of character. What is interesting is that in the nation, there are only five, and four of those are in New Jersey. And of them, you can see Cherry Hill, Mantua, Monville, and Hanover Park. But I had mentioned at the beginning about core values. And obviously, if you look back at your youth, you'll see that there were some core values that your family had that were very strong. I assume since you're serving on the board, it must have been responsibility, a desire to help others, and so on. I came from an Irish immigrant family, so hard work was a core value that I had. And on the other side, I always remember, before I went anyplace, my mother would say to me, "Oh, whatever you do, don't shame me." Now, shame should not really be a core value. But if we take the opposite of it, which is, you know, respect, politeness, courtesy, good behavior, those were the core values that were instilled in me, and I was scared stiff that I would break them. Cherry Hill has been in the business of character education for years, and they have respect, responsibility, and citizenship. Mantua, rather interesting. It's a district comparable to this. Perhaps it's not an high district, but it has elementary schools and an intermediate school. It doesn't even have a middle school. And they embrace character education just a few years ago. And what is interesting was, they had gone to the national conference, and there they heard Scarlett Lewis, whose son had been murdered in Sandy Hook massacre. And what she had chosen to do, instead of really getting revenge and so on, was to establish a program of social-emotional learning based on love. And they heard her at the Character.org conference, was so moved that that was the emphasis that they took. And I mention this because one of the things that all districts, all schools can gain is by networking with other districts that have been successful. And I remember the first time I went to a conference, and I said, "Oh, great ideas. I'll just steal them and bring them back." And people looked at me, you know, for character ed, you don't steal ideas. So then I got grown up, and I said, "Oh, replicate them." But now the N-word is harvest. So what we're trying to do in Rockaway Township is to harvest loads of new ideas, both from the schools within the district and from schools outside the district. And Monville and Hanover Park is a regional high school, does not have any elementary schools, but they have a wonderful service learning program. So if anybody is interested in service learning, if you go to their website, you can find all sorts of things. Our goal this year is to unite your efforts, take stock of your programs, and say, "What is working? Keep that. What would you like to work better?" Whenever I evaluate a school, I always ask at the end, "If you had a magic wand, what is it you would like to change in your school?" And that's something that all the principals and the board should look at. What is it that's working? And what is it that you would like to change? And character education, hopefully, can be the vehicle for that change. How are we doing then? All the principals were instructed in the eleven principles of effective character education. And just quickly, I'm not going to go through the eleven principles, but you know how they have Ten Commandments and Twelve Step Programs? The way that the eleven principles were derived was initially when they started schools of character. What they did was they asked educators from different parts of the country to submit schools of excellence that were training model citizens. And from there, they derived eleven different principles that were common to all these schools. So it was arrived inductively. And deductively, when they evaluate schools, they use it. And the reason I mention it is all the principals have the eleven principles. They know them. They're not given to the children. It's not a place of, "You march to the eleven principles." These are principles for developing the climate of the school and the relationships within the school. All schools are developing character teams. The district, Dr. Ternamian, has fifteen, is it? Fifteen values, core values that you're down to?
Correct.
And the next step is that we'll be open to the students, the staff, the parents?
Correct.
Correct. Everybody. And from those fifteen, you will develop...
Three to four.
Three or four. Okay. So it will be... Everyone will have a voice. And as a result of that, this will represent Rockaway Township. Now, the value of having the core values is that the students from kindergarten on will know what they are. They will write behavioral definitions. All programs you have so far, like the Responsive Classroom, which is used in Birchwood and it's used in Malone, the PBSIS, which is used in O'Brien, and also in... What's Mr. McGovern's school? Yes, it's also used in that. So all the programs that are there still will be there. But what will happen is that you have core values, so that the students will know them. They will be developed appropriately for the level. So by the time they get to the middle school, they will know them, but they will have different activities that are appropriate for it. You can also tie in the core values to discipline referrals. I mean, that's not the A. But for example, if the superintendent over there misbehaves, you would say, "James, what core value could you have used?" Okay? And next time, "How will you do it?" So everything ties together for it. Each school retains the practices and so on. All right. The basic steps. This is what we've done so far. First one is character education. Why do it? We know. The eleven principles for the principals, they did that. The central district think tank, I'm Derek, Dr. Ternamian, that was formed. Individual schools. I've been getting calls all week from the individual schools. And my Dan's card is full at this time. And what is interesting is that the people... Dr. McLaughlin was adamant about it not being another thing that is being foisted on the teachers on the schools. So we presented it, and then we said, "What you can do is you can work on it the way that you would like." So it's interesting, Birchwood, which has a new principal and a new guidance counselor, was right there asking me to do a presentation for the whole school so that they could. The Malone, the principal there, was very interested in tying it into her own goals and the goals of the school to improve the climate of the school. And she was using Responsive Classroom, but the training for it even wouldn't occur until June. So I managed to connect her to two other schools, and the guidance counselor of that school, Old Bridges One, and the other one is Collinswood, so that they're being connected to guidance counselors and other schools that have these programs so that they can gain additional knowledge and experience. The same way with... The Calklin is interested in starting an advisory program. But is there something wrong with this? I keep on hearing the word "the." But anyway, Calklin is interested in starting an advisory program. So I connected Mr. Benella with a school in Cherry Hill that has had an advisory program highly successful. And the school has been a National School of Character, then recertified as a National School of... And also with two people in North Plainfield that had more of a skeleton advisory program, that was not a five-day program, but was highly successful. So that's really how we're working individually with the schools. What is it that they need most in order to reach their goals? This is very similar to the presentation that they had earlier in it, in which each one of the schools lists the elements of character education in their practices. And it's interesting because the schools within the district can gain much from looking at each other's programs and seeing if those programs would help them reach their goals. And you have many interesting things there. For example, at Birchwood, now I don't know if the other schools have it, don't press send. One of the things that I think is very important about Rockaway Township is that you have technology as part of your mission. It would be wonderful to use technology as a vehicle for character education. And I do know a school out in Long Island that has... It was a hundred-year-old school. And what they did was they wired the whole school, and it's now up there with technology. And they have used technology effectively. The students have created videos, and they have different programs and so on for it. An interesting thing from Birchwood is the mindfulness. You know how mindfulness is all in there? And the fourth grade students and the faculty, from what I've heard, participated in reading the same book and so on. Dwyer is wonderful with creating a sense of family. And I think that has helped boost their scores tremendously because they are one family, not just getting the parents in, but the whole concept of a school being a family, helping one another to succeed. O'Brien is thinking of applying for a state school of character this year. And it uses PBSIS, which is Positive Behavior Support in the Schools. And so does, on the next slide, at Stony Brook. But they also combine it with different programs. Catherine Malone has service learning projects for each grade for it. Now, and Stony Brook, as I said, has PBSIS, and they have a very strong anti-bullying training, as well as, I didn't understand what it was, but monthly cohort activities. So I guess the kids work together on different service projects. Calklin has developed many presentations by experts. And also, they have a PACC, Positive Actions Creating Change, which is a student-led club. I would like to see it go beyond the club to be a school-wide endeavor. I think you're much better. The experience has been that if you can make it a school-wide activity rather than just a club activity, it becomes ingrained into the very fabric of school life. So to sum up, the goals of the Character Initiative this year is, one, keep the programs ready and tapped that are working well. Two, develop a common language so that the students in the first grade will understand what the values are. And not just know them as a list, but also write definitions. For a small child, a kindergarten child, caring may be caring and sharing, helping a friend. And that's quite different from a middle school with it. So each grade, each class would write behavioral definitions of them. And you would grow an effective district character committee. Now, I didn't want to give you the eleven principles. I'll just do them real quickly because our time is supposed to be in. And that is, the principals one, two, and three deal with core values and having practices and strategies within the school that manage to make those core values a way of life. You already have many of them, so you just have to tie them together. Fourth is the golden rule, that the teachers like the kids, the kids like each other. You have strategies in place so the kids continue to like each other, and all the grown-ups get along. And five is service. And six is a meaningful academic curriculum. You know, it's nice to have kids who are good, but it's even better if they're smart and good. So the academic curriculum is very important for six. Seven is intrinsic motivation. You want the kids to do it, be good, when no one is looking, and they're doing it for the idea of just helping others. It's the right thing to do rather than for a sticker or a pizza party. And eight, nine, and ten. Eight is that you have teachers who are role models. They practice the values. Nine is the administration practices the values and involves the larger community and the students. Ten is all the parents and the wider community. And eleven is the data. Have we achieved what we wanted? So I'm very grateful for this opportunity. And from what I can see, Rockaway Township is off and running. Every time I answer the phone, it's somebody, some principal, who's saying, "When can you fit me in?" And some of them want small groups with their character committee, others want whole groups. So again, thank you very much for listening to me. It's been a pleasure coming with you. Even I...
Thank you, Ms. Dackenworth, for being here tonight. And I know that we'll see you again, maybe before the end of the year. And thank you for all the work that you're doing in our schools in supporting our reference in character education. Our next presentation is Dr. Ternamian, who will be presenting scores relative to last year's state assessment. And the board has been given information on that. Proceed in the meeting, and these will be highlights of that data.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's great to see so many happy faces coming out. I'm sure it's my PARC presentation that brought you all out this evening. And Eileen, you're quite the active father, so I will do my best. Before I jump into the deck, I want to be previewing for you this evening our four separate analyses of our PARC results over a three-year period, 2016, 2017, and 2018. The first analysis is going to be a breakdown, just a snapshot by level. So I think most of you know in the room, we have five levels of achievement based on PARC, level one through five. The second analysis is going to be a comparison of just our 2018 data from state averages to our district averages. The third analysis will be a cohort analysis from 2016 and looking at four different cohorts over the last three years. And then the last analysis is going to focus on subgroup data on our economically disadvantaged students and our students with special needs. All right, let's jump in. So what you have up here in front of you is the percentages for Language Arts over a three-year period broken down by level. Now, I would focus your attention all the way to the right, to those last two columns. Those last two columns are comparing the changes we see in Level one and two and Level four and five. The idea being that, you know, at a high level, you want to see more negative numbers in that column there, change in Level one and two, 2016 and 2018. We want those numbers to be going down over time so that less students are in Level one and two. And then that very far column to the right, we want to see more positive numbers. So you want to see more students transitioning to Levels four and five. An important footnote for this slide and the next slide, these are different kids. This is not a cohort analysis. So they're different kids of each year. As you all know, each student population brings its own unique challenges. But generally speaking, we want to see a downward trend in Level one and two and upward trend in Level four and five. So for example, if you look across from grade five, six, and seven, and you see that very positive trend in grades, in the movement to Levels four and five, that's a good trend that, you know, gives us cause for great optimism. And again, this is Language Arts over a three-year period. Now, the next slide, I'm going to warn you. The next slide is going to be the exact same breakdown, but for math. So again, have your eyes go to the right first. Again, a similar idea. You want to see more negative numbers in that first column there to the right in the change in Level one and two. And on the very far column to the right, you want to see more positive numbers. We don't see over time a significant trend in the math outcomes based on levels. This next analysis is the breakdown of state averages versus our district averages for Language Arts, broken down by grid. So you have from three to eight, you have your Level one. And then the boldface numbers are the state averages. Similar to the last two slides I showed you, you want to see in Level one and two, our averages being less than the state average. And generally, you see that trend happening here. Conversely, if you go to Levels four and five, you want to see our numbers outpace state averages. And generally, you're seeing that. Let you take that in. Okay, now, similar pattern as the last time. This next slide, the same analysis, but our math scores over a three-year period. So if we look at Levels four and five, we do see generally on Level four where our averages are above state averages, generally a good thing. We don't quite see that same level achievement at Level five for state averages in comparison. Okay, I'm now going to go to the third of the four analysis I previewed for you in my opening remarks. This is now the cohort analysis, starting from 2016. And again, the first slide is English Language Arts. Here, on this slide, you want to start your eyes to the top left. You're going to see the boldface numbers. And now you want to read this slide from a diagonal perspective. Okay? So grade three in 2016 is on that first line. That cohort of students in 2017 is one line down. So if you go from fifty-five point six to seventy-four point three to seventy-one point three, you have your cohort analysis over a three-year period. Now, the end, you'll notice changes slightly. But generally speaking, where our student population is generally fairly stable. But so it's not an exact apples-to-apples comparison, but we generally know, for the most part, we generally have the same kids in the same grade year to year. So again, the word "general" is very important here. Generally speaking, you have a cohort analysis over three years. And what's really nice to highlight here, generally speaking, of these four trends, three of them are pretty positive, right? So if you take this first one, fifty-five point six, seventy-four point three, the seventy-one point three, then generally a positive trend. And three of those four trends up there are positive. Something, again... And three of those four trends up there are positive, something again, a nice cause for optimism. Same analysis for math. Again, you're going to want to do a diagonal look, 57.8, 59 to 54.3, and so on. The trend data here is not similar to the language arts trend you saw in the last slide. It's either more flat or slightly downward. I can tell you're on the edge of your seat, so I'm now going to go to the fourth analysis that I previewed for you in my open remarks. This is the subgroup data analysis. This is for English Language Arts, looking at our economically disadvantaged subgroup compared to the district averages for proficiency. The way we're defining proficiency is a combination of level four and five. So we basically said and did our analysis and we pulled out all of the students by grade who we, who are considered to be economically disadvantaged. And we asked ourselves, how many of those students achieved either level four or level five? We then compared that number to the amount of students with the general population who achieved a level four and five. What you see in the red is our district average. You see in the blue are the performances for the economically disadvantaged students. Generally speaking, in language, English Language Arts, there's about a 20-point gap between what our district averages are and what that subgroup is performing at. And this is just 2018. This is English Language Arts again, this is special needs population. Here you see a wider gap, generally at least in each grade, about a 25-point gap, some greater than that. Two more slides. Subgroup analysis for math. You see the gap here, economically disadvantaged students. It's pretty consistent with the English Language Arts, about a 20-point gap, some areas much higher. But at the very least, a 20-point gap. Here, special needs in math, you see some pretty significant gaps across, higher than 25 points, in some cases, very, very significant. At the beginning of my presentation, I began by framing my comments tonight as a preliminary analysis. What I mean by that is it's our intention to continue to come back to the community and the board and share more data analysis in terms of what we can learn about what we're doing, how we set our goals, and how we're going forward. So this was, again, the first step of analyzing our data. Effective conversations about data have to be ongoing, and they will continue to be over the course of this year and multiple years. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
So some takeaways from our, our data. I think we can certainly take hope in the progress, the progress that we've noticed in certain trends. As Eileen mentioned, with character education, which we see really not separate, but ingrained with our academic achievement, we want to take what works and we want to continue to build on that. And we want to accept our challenges and build on those as well. So I think the, the honest view of our data shows us where we're succeeding and where we as an administration need to provide support to our talented teachers to work with our students and provide them with the resources that they need so that we can, we can reach the potential of our population. We believe in our students, we know our students can achieve, certainly not just at the state level, but well beyond it. We know that they have that capability, we know we have the right people in place to deliver that instruction. And, and our job over the course of the year is to work together to figure out for those students who are not yet succeeding, how they can succeed. And that is our commitment to the community, and that is what we intend to go about doing in terms of our work. So we look forward to coming back and updating our community in terms of our progress. We anticipate that we will have good news to share, and we will continue to be honest about where our challenges lie. Thank you, Dr. Tanamiyan, for, for that analysis.
Moving on to public discussion. During the course of board meetings, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board of Education are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees of the board are, I'm sorry, that students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, much better, nor responsibility, now I can see. No responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public? So, Mrs., I'm going to try and do this well for you. So, Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Metzger. If anyone wishes to address the board, now's your time. You can pull it right out, it might be easier.
Oh, no, it might be easier on everybody's ears. Okay, Brian Adams and Donna Zirkel with the RTEA. We have a couple checks that we'd like to present here. And the first one is, on the first day of school, our members passed the hat and threw money in to raise money for the therapy dogs for the, with the Rockaway Township Education Foundation. And so I'd like to introduce Lisa Harland, who's here. And then here we have a $500 check for the Education Foundation. I promise I won't cut the kids in line to get the therapy dogs. The, this next check I'm really excited about. I think it was two board meetings ago, Miss Sally asked for an update on the Visions Federal Credit Union grant program that we applied for. And I outlined this long process that we were going to be going through, signing people up for accounts through Vision, they were going to get $25. And, and $25 would go towards the program. After that, that board meeting, I got a special call. So I'd like to introduce the, the young ladies who were here last, the last board meeting, Tiana and Caitlin, to come on up. And they are our rock stars who are, you know, leading this, this push. And they've fundraised how much money, ladies? Fine, lots of money. And so I'd also like to introduce Liz McDonough from Visions, to come on up. And so the special exciting announcement, do you want to make it? Oh, okay, I love it. So I got this special call, and Vision, Vision said that they were not going to do that little $25 thing. They were just going to give us the $5,000 outreach. So to thank Liz and her team at Visions, who are great people, they do things for, for educators. There's a whole bunch of us in the room here, so, thank you, ladies. And finally, we'd like to read this. Tonight, we'd like to express our hopes that next week, we will be able to make an agreement to settle our contract that lapsed in June. Over the last three years, Donna and I stood here in front of you on several occasions. We asked you to listen to what we, the RTEA, were saying, and not just hear us. Our professional voices were not being valued. It seemed that nobody was listening. Changes were being made unilaterally. Our sense of community was altered. We were told you were either with us or against us by Central Office Administration. We, the RTEA, endured this negativity and continued our role in providing a high level of education for the children of Rockaway Township, despite our treatment, because we are invested in the children.
We continue and even worked harder to bring programs and funding through Pride Grants to the community at no cost. Our events have grown exponentially in participation as we reached different facets of the community, the Rockaway Township Substance Abuse Alliance, the Education Foundation, the Christ Church, and the Fire Department. We reached out to parents and students to navigate through this new age of smartphones with our viewing of screenagers. We supported Don't Press Send. We brought in a rock band reverse order to play music with a positive anti-bullying message, Reverse the Trend, at the Tri-County Fair. Our Pumpkin Fest has brought hundreds of community members here to Copeland to have a fun family night. At the beginning of the school year, at a time when most of us are financially strapped, we collected an average of $500 and then passed the hat that we donated to various funds such as the RTEF or the Red Cross. Our philanthropic fund, which is sustained by our members, donations continues to provide thousands in scholarships to former Copeland students graduating from high school. We also provide relief for families in need, receiving hundreds of dollars each. Our community outreach is second to none, not here in Morris County, nor the state of New Jersey. We received over $20,000 in Pride Grants this year, and we intend on exceeding that level. Why? Because we are invested in the children of Rockaway Township.
Despite the lack of respect we were shown by previous administrators, we started this year with a positive and collegial transition to a new central office team. We appreciate the respect shown by Dr. McLaughlin and Dr. Tanamiyan. Despite the lack of a successor agreement, our members are more, even more engaged in the district by serving on ad hoc committees, such as Dr. Tanamiyan's literacy think tank, which nearly has 40 members, looking to provide meaningful discussions to improve instruction in the district by adding, by members adding their years of experience. These committees are not paid positions. Our members are dedicating their time because we are invested in the children of Rockaway Township. But all of that positive momentum is put at risk by the lack of a contract agreement. For the past eight years, take-home pay for educators in New Jersey has decreased significantly due to healthcare and pension contributions. While once a solid middle-class profession, many educators work extra jobs with the hope of making ends meet. Educators have sunk into credit card debt, trying to pay for items they could once afford, barely live paycheck to paycheck. Educators toss and turn at night, nervous about how they will send their own children to college. We fear for the future of this profession as we know the number of college students entering the field have dropped precipitously with the attacks on the profession by politicians and the lack of living wages. Once upon a time, there was a social contract that was accepted by all. You went to a school to teach, gave it your all, and you would earn a solid middle-class wage and a pension to take care of you in your golden years. But that social contract has been violated. And many of our members have told us that they refuse to let their children go into the profession that they've devoted their life to because of the threats previously described.
Our members that include custodial staff, staff assistants, secretaries, and teachers are giving 110% to their students and this community every day. Our new central office administrators are not only hearing, but listening and communicating.
The board has publicly and privately said that they value the educators of this district. So we are asking that you invest in the children of Rockaway Township and come to an agreement to settle our contract that lapsed in June. Thank you.
Mike Guzio, Six Arley Drive. I'm here on behalf of the council, and Councilman Quinn with me tonight. Last year, the town looked at a program called LEAD that we were exploring, both myself, Councilman Quinn, and the mayor, about replacing Dare. We felt that it had relevant topics, that would be a better fit than Dare for our schools. What we did is, we brought in a presenter from the state, and we started to have some dialogue and started to build a framework as to how we were going to make the transition. Dare is administered as a lead to the police department, so we work in concert with the board of ed and the teachers. It's a team effort. Our administration changed here at the school, so I know you guys inherited this project. And I'm just looking for an update as to the status. I know there was dialogue with Mayor Datchison at one point, and I'm just looking for an update as to where we're going with the project. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the question. And so you're right, we did inherit this conversation, but I do want to assure you in the community, we haven't braced it. There are several steps that we've taken over the last couple of months to explore the opportunity to potentially make the switch from Dare to a LEAD program. I've met with the executive director in person, and at the same time, we realized that we had already undertaken a rewrite of our health curriculum. And so what we did as that process started to unfold was actually slow it down so that we could first better understand the LEAD program and contemplate what would be the right vision if we did make a switch to LEAD, in terms of what would be the right grade levels and what would be the right timing to do that. So I can update you on the process and where we are right now. We have made agreement with the police department for this school year to continue with Dare. That gives us an opportunity to work with our PE teachers and the health writers of the health curriculum to think about the LEAD program and where it best fits in our curriculum over a multi-year period. I'll be candid with the community that the vision for this continues to evolve because it's very much a work in progress. And so I know some of our curriculum writers in the audience, so if you're hearing this most updated vision for the first time, you have my apologies. So currently, what we're exploring is, on November 6th, we're going to be pulling all of our PE teachers together as part of our Insertus Day. And part of their experience that day will be, they'll have an opportunity to go through two boxes of materials, LEAD materials, that are already currently in the district. And they'll also be meeting with the curriculum writers. After that session, we should be in a position to make a determination of whether or not LEAD will fit as a fifth-grade replacement of Dare and plus potentially keeping it in sixth grade and seventh grade. So potentially, the vision is right now that we're considering is a So potentially, the vision is right now that we're considering is a substance abuse program in our curriculum that students experience in 5th grade. There's then a bridge to 6th grade. It then continues into 7th grade, integrate into our health curriculum. And then there's an intentional tie to the wonderful work that Multiple Alliance does. And they're working with the R8 graders. And so the narrative we're considering now for the potential implementation of LEAD is 5, 6, 7, and then a connection, intentional connection, to the work of the Multiple Alliance. That being said, the timeline is probably by the end of winter, early spring, we would come to the board with a proposal as an adoption of our health curriculum that would consider the LEAD program as part of that.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larissa Smith. I live at 124 Mountain Road in Rockaway. Dr. Tenamian, I just have a question. Will that park presentation be available online?
Yes.
Yes, okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not, may I have a motion to close the public, please? Still moved. Mrs. Brooks, 2nd. Mrs. Cherico. Moving on to communications. Since the last board meeting, there have been three received as of yesterday or this morning. Have there been any additional since then? I don't believe so. Okay. Moving on then to approve the minutes. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes to September 26th?
So moved.
Mrs. Cherico and Mrs. Brooks, 2nd. Board discussion? If not, roll call.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Baughn.
Thank you. Providing some informational items to the board in regard to our enrollment, our drills with month of September, and our nurse's report for month of September. And this evening, I'd like to offer my own warm and enthusiastic welcome to Rachel DeCarlo, our new school business administrator and board secretary. She made her official start in the district this past Monday and is already leading in the work of business of our district. So, welcome to you. Each of the Rockaway Township Public Schools observed the days spanning October 1st through the 5th as the Week of Respect. Activities promoting the importance of character education were implemented through age-appropriate instruction at every grade level. School Violence Awareness Week occurs during the week of October 15th through the 19th, and again, activities highlighting this critically important area will occur throughout the district. And I will share a report on those specific activities in regard to both of the weeks with the board at our second October meeting on October 30th, with the clear understanding that in Rockaway Township, we're committed to themes of character education, respect, and nonviolence, not only during the set-aside times of the year, but each and every day of our school year. Take Your Child to Work Day falls on a school holiday this year. It is critically important that children we serve have multiple opportunities to imagine roles and professions in their future life after school. And to underscore our commitment to that belief, our district will observe our own alternative date for Take Your Child to Work Day, and that has been designated as April 18th. So that's both for our staff to have their own children here and also for our children to go out into the workplace with an excuse of absence. Substitute teaching is critically important to the daily operation of our schools and the ongoing implementation of instruction to our students. It prevents interruptions in learning that may occur through the unavoidable lapsences of teachers that happen as a matter of course in a school year. Like many districts, we have been challenged by the shortage of qualified substitute teachers to meet our daily needs. And I would like to thank the board this evening for their commitment to addressing this challenge and approving new rates that have been recommended to attract and retain the very best individuals to these positions. I'd like to encourage qualified individuals from our community to consider joining our ranks and serving the students of Rockaway Township. We have set what I believe is a very competitive and attractive rate of $100 per day. We did that after taking a survey of all Morris County districts, surrounding districts, and this will put us at the very top and ahead of many of those districts to come here to Rockaway Township. Additionally, we are establishing a position called a floater sub for individuals who will commit to three designated days a week and will earn a rate of $110 a day for those three days of work. So we're very optimistic that that will address some of the issues that we've been experiencing with substitute teachers. On October 3rd, our district's emergency management team met and addressed a number of items relative to the continued focus on school safety and readiness for potential crisis. School safety drills, increased resources, police walkthroughs in our schools, and shared best practices were among the items on our agenda. I'd like to extend my thanks to Mr. McGovern, who serves as our district safety officer, and to the members of our Police Department for their participation in that meeting, but more importantly, to their continued proactive work on behalf of our student security and well-being. In this vein, I intended Monday's PTA meeting at the Stony Brook School to share information relative to the Stop It Act. And I look forward to spending time with each of our PTAs, with the exception of Dwyer, who Dr. Tenamian will be presenting to, to discuss the important safety tool that this act represents. And we look forward to implementing that in January. As the board is already aware, this summer, the district undertook a long-awaited and necessary phone upgrade project. Such undertakings are significant in scope, and I am happy to report that we are nearing completion of the project. And the following dates represent completion targets in each of our schools. DBO, October 9th. Copeland, October 10th. KDM, October 11th. Dwyer, October 12th. Our Transportation Department, October 15th. Maintenance, October 15th. Birchwood, October 16th. And Stony Brook, October 17th. There is no date for the administration building, but I'm sure we'll get phones at some point. Send smoke signals. I would like to thank Mr. Graber and the technology staff, and to Mr. Cuevas and the maintenance staff for their dedication to this project's completion. And at our next board meeting, we hope to recommend an individual for the position of Chief Technology Officer to the Board of Education. We're confident that we will bring on board an individual with knowledge and skills that will build upon the great progress that we have made in technology and the role it plays in the effective instruction of our students as we move forward in an ever-changing world of innovation. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Baughn? Okay, if not... If not, the business administrator's report?
Okay, first, I'd like to say I did write this report yesterday, so it seems like I'm twelve days into about a long day. Can't. But I just wanted to let you know. So as I entered the afternoon hours of my second day as business administrator in this district, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank everybody for their warm welcome, as well as their willingness to answer my multiple questions very patiently and confidently. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to visit four of the schools with Franklin Cuevas. We went to KDM, Copeland, Dwyer, and Stony Brook. I found them all to be clean, bright, and filled with both students and staff that were genuinely happy to be there. We discussed ideas for future renovations, as well as the schedule for the beating of the building facilities. The business office over the next several weeks will begin to develop a budget calendar for next year, as well as closing out many of the fiscal reports for the 2017-18 school year. And the ASSA snapshot, which is our application for state aid, will be taken on Monday, November 15th, with the report due to the state by 16th of November. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. DeCarlo? If not, Dr. Tenamian?
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. I'd like to begin by sharing some very exciting news. Since our last board meeting in September, we posted new opportunities for our elementary teachers to begin serving as grade group facilitators for the 18-19 school year. This posting was a direct result of what Dr. McGlaughlin and I heard on our listening tours from our elementary teachers. Across all of our elementary schools, teachers requested time when they could meet with other teachers working in the same grade level. Tonight, I'm very pleased to report we had a number of teachers come forward and apply for these roles, and on our agenda this evening, we have the six teachers that were selected. I'll be meeting with these six teachers this Monday to begin the planning, the content and activities for our November 6th full day in service. At our next board meeting, I will share details with the board and the community about the various activities planned for all of our teachers and staff members on November 6th, and how they align with our district's goals and priorities. Earlier this evening, I presented our district park results from the past three school years. I would now like to share some additional updates about recently adopted changes to the name, length, and time for the Spring 2019 State Assessments. First, New Jersey has ended its membership with the Interstate Consortium that produced the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career Assessments, otherwise known as PARK. Hold on now. While the online platform, however, will remain the same, New Jersey's Mathematics and English Language Arts Assessments will no longer be called PARK. The statewide assessments for ELA and Math will be called the following: New Jersey's Student Learning Assessments, ELA, and New Jersey's Student Learning Assessments, MathMatters. Second, beginning with the Spring 2019 Assessment Period, the item counts, so the test questions will be reduced, resulting in fewer units in ELA. The number of ELA units will be reduced from three to two, resulting in a reduction of 75 minutes in Grade 3 and 90 minutes in Grade 4 through high school. Third, for Math, the item counts are being reduced, resulting in fewer units and testing blocks. In Grade 3 to 5, the number of units will be reduced from four to three, resulting in a reduction of 60 minutes of testing time. For Grade 6 to 8, the number of units will remain at three, but the time allowed for each 80-minute block will be reduced by 20 minutes per unit for a total reduction of 60 minutes in testing time. And within each unit, the number of item counts will also be reduced. The Algebra 1 and of course Test will be reduced from three units to two units of 90 minutes each, for a total reduction time of 90 minutes. The New Jersey Department of Education has notified us, these are interim changes resulting from feedback received from a Phase 1 outreach to stakeholders. The NJDOE will be exploring possible long-term changes to the state's assessment system in the future, shifting gears from PARK, or what was formerly known as PARK. I would like to provide the board with updates regarding the work of our two think-tank committees. Both committees convened in person during the last week of September. The Character Education Think Tank created a subcommittee, which is in the process of designing a survey, that's what I'd lean with referring to earlier, a survey to be rolled out to internal and external stakeholders in the coming weeks. The survey will seek to gather feedback from community members about various core values the committee is considering as possible district core values. The Literacy Think Tank has launched four subcommittees. This past week, I met individually with the chairpersons for each of the subcommittees. The four subcommittees are as follows: Academic Intervention, Best Practices, that's the core, Data Review, and Assessment and Standards. Each subcommittee is focused on specific tasks in preparation for our next in-person meeting of the entire think-tank on October 25th. I would again like to thank and commend all of the teachers volunteering to serve on these committees. The excitement and expertise they bring to the work is inspiring for us all. I am pleased to report the district recently invested in the online platform, Newsella. Upon review of usage data, many Rockaway teachers were already using Newsella in their classrooms to both expose students to more nonfiction texts and provide students with the same content, but with differentiated reading levels. By upgrading our account to the Pro version, teachers can now assign students quizzes and track student results over time, and they have access to many more materials and resources. We applaud our teachers for bringing this wonderful resource into our classrooms. I would like to acknowledge Gina Parisi for taking time from her busy schedule to join me on a road trip to all of our faculty meetings this past month. Gina presented to all staff about our partnership with MSU and the opportunities for professional development and grants that result from that partnership. We are already seeing an increase in interest and demand for the professional development opportunities. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the Stony Brook community for inviting Dr. McGlaughlin and I to visit their PBSIS team-building event. Staff and students engaged in a full day of activities focused on building a positive school culture while reflecting about how students and staff live out their school core values each and every school day. It was truly an inspiring and fun-filled day. Lastly, I have two specific updates to our gifted and talented services. Our two lead GNT teachers will be attending the Rutgers Annual Gifted Education Conference on November 30th. And we are also having conversation with Rutgers Gifted Education Department about a possible partnership where they would provide the district with advice and counsel specific to our identification process for gifted and talented services. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any board member have any questions? I do. Are there any states left in the park?
That's a great question.
I think we're down to eight as of last year. I'm not sure how many, although.
It hasn't run down.
Very much so. Okay, thank you. Moving on then to committee reports. Any committee reports from the board?
Yesterday, the Education Committee, between your opinion...
No.
Yesterday, the Education Committee met, and thank you, Dr. Menchman, for summarizing what we talked about yesterday. And our next meeting is November 13th.
Thank you.
And then the Policy Committee met after the Education Committee, and we had Franklin come in and speak to us. The policies that we reviewed last evening will be on the next agenda for our first reading. One of them was called District Sustainability, and that's the first step. Franklin would like us to become a Sustainable Jersey Certified. And there's a whole process to play. The first is how they need policy approved, and he has a whole plan, and there's different levels, so it's exciting. It's a process that he's very excited about. There's a bronze level and a silver level. He feels that we are doing things in the district that we... The bronze level is very easily attainable, and then the goal will be the silver level. So we'll be more about that as I go along.
Thank you more?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? If not, moving on then to recommended for board action. First section is on personnel. Begins on page four, it ends on page six. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Oh, thanks a lot. Okay, so Mrs. Cherico and Mrs. Brooks. Because it's personnel, there will be no public discussion. Discussion was had as required by law in executive session. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Moving on to HIB Determination, beginning on page six, ending on page seven. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Messick?
2nd.
Mrs. Cherico. Dr. Baughn, you want to make a comment?
Yes, we're seeing for a second time cases 1, 2, and 3. So those will be affirmed tonight as confirmed, unconfirmed, and unconfirmed. And then for the first time, the board received information about HIB current investigations, four, which was unconfirmed, five confirmed, six unconfirmed, and seven unconfirmed.
Okay, so today, tonight, we're voting though on cases 1 as confirmed and 2 and 3 as unconfirmed. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes. Moving on to Education, beginning on page seven, ending on page seven. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
2nd.
Mrs. Maluzak and Mrs. Brooks. Board discussion. If not, I can open it up to the public. Is there anyone who wishes to make a... Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment on education? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmey?
Yes. Moving on to special education, but we can skip that because there are no items for approval or discussion. Moving on then to administration, beginning on page eight, ending on page nine. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Mezick?
Second.
Mrs. Helber? Board discussion. I have number one then. Dr. McGovern, can you explain the side bar agreement number one, please?
Yes, we worked collegially with the RTA and arrived at a side bar agreement which basically transferred a stipend that was previously provided to teacher-based affirmative action officers and moved that stipend to the newly created positions of grade-level facilitators, which Dr. Tanamiyan highlighted in his report this evening.
Thank you. Also noted in this section is what Mrs. Cherico is talking about, about the Garden State Sustainability. I'm sorry, wrong. Sorry about that. The Garden State Coalition of Schools, so let me then turn it over to you one more time then to explain that.
Yes, first of all, I'd like the Board to just amend that resolution and take out the word "sample." I apologize, that was given to us by the Garden State Coalition, and the word "sample" found its way into our agenda. But the Garden State Coalition is a group of districts throughout the state who come together to discuss pivotal issues that will impact on students and teachers and on curriculum throughout the state. They are a powerful voice in education that are heard and included in many of the committees that the New Jersey Department of Education puts together. The importance of belonging to the consortium is not just to have a part of that voice, but also to be a part of the information that often comes first to the members of the coalition, to participate with other districts throughout the state on current themes, to learn from each other, to share with each other, and to form partnerships. I again appreciate the support of the Board in joining this coalition. It is a membership that includes Board members and administrators. Certainly, as we attend these regular meetings, we will also share information out to our public from the Garden State Coalition and items of importance and things that are of an upcoming nature.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Board? If not, I can open it to the public. If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmey?
Yes. Moving on to finance, beginning on page nine, ending on page ten. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks? Board discussion on finance.
I just have one question, safe credit. Is that money up to us, or are we going to extend it?
That money actually gets taken off the premium.
I don't think the public can hear, so if you can just speak...
That's okay.
Both of you have to just speak in. Yeah, just go right in.
It reduces the amount of the premium that we also will take the amount off what the district hopes to pay the insurance side.
The question dealt with the safe credit, what it entailed. Any other questions? If not, I can open to the public? Not, roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmey?
Yes. Moving on to policy, the one everybody just waits for every meeting. We've been rather busy, as you can see. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Mezick?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks? Board discussion, Mrs. Cherico.
Okay, these policies are on for second read, and we did go through them at the first read. There have been no changes made, and as everyone can see, that we were told they are now on our website under Board Policies under Construction, so they've been there, and it's also a little bit differently looked than what the audience has used to seeing in a policy, where you see what's folded, it's being added, what's being struck out, so you're actually seeing what the Policy Committee is seeing now. And then, one addition that we are going to, we did ask for, is online for you to know at what point the policy is, if it's not through a first read, a date of the second read, so there's going to be some updates to that under construction area also. But specifically, nothing has changed on any of these policies from the first read. I will tell you that there has been intimidation and bullying. Once the Board does approve it, that the county has to be made aware that we have this approved and a date of approval for the policy. But if anyone has any specific questions, I'd be glad to elaborate again.
Some of the policies you'll see are now longer, because it seems like the procedures are now being tied into some of the policies. H.I.B. was required to do that, so although our H.I.B. policy was a lot shorter last year, but the regulation was much longer, now it's all in one, so it looks like a lot longer than we have, but basically it's basically the same policy.
And the regulations for the policies implemented.
So with this approval tonight, these would become then effective?
More.
Correct? Okay. So any other board discussion for Mrs. Cherico or the Policy Committee? If not, I can open it up to the public? Okay, roll call then, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmey?
Okay, moving then on to discussion items, to old business. Is there any old business? I will make mention of one, with the resignation of Mrs. Jabala, who was our liaison to the town council in this municipality, as well as shared services. The question was, who will fill her role? The Board has made a decision. Mrs. Brooks has volunteered to do that if and when we need it. Right now, given the tenure, there doesn't seem to be an immediate need, but should there be a shared services request on the part of the municipality, or that the municipality wants someone from the Board to attend its meeting and be its spokesperson, Mrs. Brooks then has gladly volunteered for that and would hold that position until the reorg meeting. Any other old business? New business?
I have one item. I just wanted to, although it's preliminary, let you know that we are investigating the issue of vehicles that are passing our school buses illegally, and I spoke with Mr. Carl today, and we spoke into the police department. We will be investigating, it might be in an incremental way, focusing on our most needy routes first, some exterior cameras on the arm of the bus that would help identify vehicles that do make that violation. So we've been recommended to Jefferson Township, who apparently has had this program in place, and we'll be investigating the cost and the implementation, and I'll provide the Board with updates as we go along.
Thank you. We may already have a folder on that, because it was brought to, I know that the town council urged us to do the same, and investigation had started at the end of last school year. At the time, the cost for cameras was prohibitive, and we didn't have the budget to support it, and the accuracy sometimes of what it captured was also in question, so I look forward to hearing from what you find out from your investigation. Okay, I have then an announcement under new business, and then I'll hand this over to the business administrator, put into the minutes. The Rockaway Township Board of Education invites qualified candidates to submit their written request to be considered to fill a Board of Education vacancy for a term that expires on or about January first, two thousand and nineteen. This is due to the resignation of Mrs. Jabala. According to law, a qualified candidate must be able to read and write, be a citizen of the United States... I didn't make that up, it's what the law says. And we all qualify, just in case you're worried. Be a citizen of the United States, a resident of Rockaway Township for at least a year, and be registered and eligible to vote in Rockaway Township. In addition, the person can have no claim against the Board, cannot hold office of the municipal governing body, or cannot simultaneously hold two elective offices. Candidates are asked to submit a one-page letter expressing their interest and qualifications for the position to Board mail at rocktwip.org by Thursday, October twenty-fifth. Qualified applicants will be interviewed during an open session on October thirty, if that is our next meeting, on a Tuesday, don't forget, and the decision will be announced at the November fourteenth meeting. Sorry, rocktwip.net. You can see, I'm good at lights, but I'm not sure about the other part of technology. Rocktwip.net. This will be posted, this announcement will be posted on our website, it will be tweeted from the district, it will be posted wherever our agendas are posted, which includes the library, we have municipality, we have public places, and we look forward to then filling Mrs. Jabala's seat at the November fourteenth meeting. The selected candidate will be sworn in at that time and will serve until on or before January first. Our reorg meeting, I believe, is the second or third of January, so the term would end at that point. I'll write this up. Any other Board new business? I can open it up to the public if anybody wishes to address the Board. Okay, with that, the Board needs to go back into executive session for legal concerns. We will not be coming back to open. There will be no decisions made. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening and good luck on your pumping carving day.[1768.54][1768.57](laughter)